Good evening. Good evening, everyone. If you please take your seats. I'm David Maron with the League of Women Voters. Welcome to this Candidates Forum. Tonight, we're going to hear from the six candidates for Thousand Oaks City Council. We're also proud to be cosponsored tonight by AAUW for the Branch for Thousand Oaks. Before we begin, one housekeeping request. If you have a cellphone, will you please put that on silent so we don't disturb the candidates? And after we go through some welcome remarks, we'll start with opening statements. At this time, it's my honor to introduce Narda Fargestine from AAUW.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Narda Fargestine, and I am one of the co-presidents this year of the Thousand Oaks Branch of the American Association of University Women, commonly known as AAUW. On behalf of my organization and the League of Women Voters, we welcome you to this evening's election forum. A sincere thank you to the candidates who are present for spending this time away from their busy schedules to answer the public's questions in an open, nonpartisan setting. Thank you also to the Ventura County unit of the League of Women Voters, who are providing our expert moderator, David Marron. AAUW strongly believes in community involvement and has over a century of responsible public participation at the local, state, national, and international levels. The history of the American Association of University Women mirrors the progress of women in the United States since 1881. As the number of women graduating from college grew, so did our membership. We've published hundreds of research reports. We have supported the academic achievements of many scholars, from scientist Marie Curie, where we provided her the funds for her one gram of radium, to the first woman to Women Nobel Prize, to astronaut Judith Resnick, the second woman in travel in space. Our own branch is celebrating 58 years in the Conejo Valley. Our member-endorsed public policy program illuminates and advances AAUW's mission of promoting equity for women and girls through the advocacy, education, philanthropy, and research. AAUW fosters factual, in-depth, objective dialogue among legislators and change-makers, which results in various types of support for women, girls, and families in all areas of life and work. So if you want to join us at any of our meetings, come see me, and I would be glad to help you. So let us proceed with our program with Kathy Morgan from the League.
Thank you, Narda, and thank you to everybody for being here tonight, and especially for our candidates for running for office and awesome responsibility and for being present to answer questions this evening. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 with the mission of educating a new group of voters, women, who were granted the right to vote nationwide with the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment. We are a nonpartisan organization committed to providing voters with factual, nonbiased information, and as such, do not support a particular political party or a particular candidate. The League today continues with the mission of empowering voters, defending democracy by registering voters, providing information about the candidates and the issues, getting out the vote, and supporting fair and transparent election. The candidate forums are an opportunity for voters to hear from the various candidates and to get the information that they need to make an informed choice when they vote. We are glad that you are here tonight to hear from our candidates. We are very pleased to be partnering with the AAUW and thank them for their collaboration in presenting this forum. At this time, I would like to turn it back to our moderator extraordinaire, David Maron. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. The way this works is we want to take the questions from you, the audience. So we have cards, we have pencils, just raise your hand, and we'll have volunteers bring it out to you. And you in the upper rows, you'll give our volunteers some good cardio workout tonight, I think. So we're happy to bring cards to you, as many as you want. At this time, we're going to begin with our candidates as far as opening statements. There are two different districts that you'll be voting for. Those of you who live in District Four will be choosing from Al Adam and Jeff Schwartz. Those of you in District Five will be choosing from the other candidates. So with that, we're going to begin. The candidates have one minute. We have a timer up there here to keep them on track. And Al, when you're ready, one minute.
How about now? All right, start it over again, if you would, please. Thank you. Anyway, I'm running for a lot of reasons. There are three big ones that stand out: public safety, I want to make sure Thousand Oaks is the safest city as it possibly can be; I've been endorsed by the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, who just busted that South American theft ring, give them credit for that; we're always the top five cities in the state that are safest; and we've got the lowest crime rate per capita in the United States of America. I want to protect our neighborhoods and open space. Sacramento's got some aggressive housing policies that we've managed to get around. We're going to put housing where people want it, along the 101 corridor, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and make some walkable neighborhoods there. And lastly, I want to keep this city fiscally sound. With my financial expertise, we're able to balance the budget. We have surpluses every year. We have the highest credit rating possible, AAA rated, and we are a low-tax city. We don't have a property tax, but we have the lowest sales tax that the state allows, seven and a quarter percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Connie Gutiérrez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Connie Gutiérrez, and I will be your voice on the Thousand Oaks City Council. I have years of experience fostering trust and building community, and I have mastered these skills both in corporate America and on nonprofit boards. My campaign does not accept contributions from developers nor special interests, and my supporters are individual residents just like you. I will take community-first approaches to all the issues that affect us, such as housing, public safety, and quality of life. I'm a problem solver, not a bomb-thrower, and I look forward to having your consideration this November and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Brent Hagel.
Hello, I'm Brent Allen Hagel, and I'm running a self-funded grassroots campaign. Thank you for inviting me here this evening. I'm a third-generation Thousand Oaks resident and was born here at Los Robles Hospital. I'm a husband and wife of eleven years to Ivy, hi Ivy, and my two kids, Lucas and Kelly, making them fourth-generation residents. My career is a professional voiceover artist for movie studios and TV networks, and I work in the entertainment marketing space. I work daily with creative producers and creative directors and audio engineers, whose role it is to be as creative as possible every single day and push the boundaries of creativity. The city of Thousand Oaks itself was once an idea in the 1920s, when little 14-year-old Bobby Harrington's idea for the name Thousand Oaks won the city naming contest. The city itself was an idea. This building we're in tonight was an idea. I'm running on creative ideas for our residents to lead us into a bright future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Kevin McNamee.
Thank you, David. My name's Kevin McNamee, and I've had the pleasure of serving the people of Thousand Oaks for the last four years. I'd like to bring a variety of opportunity here to the city, and that my job as council member is to address challenges that face us. The majority of the challenges we face today comes from county, state, and federal governments. I want to keep governments small but efficient to provide the services we enjoy, taxes low so that way it keeps the money in your pocket, not the government's, and regulations that are necessary, make sense, are enforceable, and well-written. I'd like to say thank you to the previous councils that have gone previously to my term here, because we are sitting in what I call the Gem of California. When I go out and other speaking events around the country, meet other council members and mayors, we have a wonderful city here, and I want to tip my hat to the previous council members and mayors, city staff that have gone before me. Again, my name's Kevin McNamee, and I look forward to presenting a little more of my vision.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jeff Schwartz.
I'm Jeff Schwartz, and I'm the fresh voice with new ideas the council needs. I'm fighting a David versus Goliath battle against one of the most hypocritical politicians TO has ever seen. My opponent has misled voters since the first day he took office 12 years ago. He falsely promised to bring term limits to TO, and now has betrayed the voters by claiming an exemption from his own term limits initiative. He falsely promised to put an end to the power of big money in politics, yet he's the biggest campaign spender in TO's history, and this year, he's raised so much money from wealthy special interests that he's received more than 30 times more than any other candidate. My opponent is dangerously drunk on power, special interest money, and political domination. He shouldn't be running, and I ask he withdraw from this race and apologize to the public that he's repeatedly deceived.
Thank you. And our last candidate is Daniel Tweak.
There are no passengers on Spaceship Earth. There are only crew, and we're all crew, so really, this room should be full of crew members. Bucky Fuller said that about 1969, but Spaceship Earth was actually coined back in 1879 by Henry George, who could have saved capitalism and destroyed Marxism with what's called land capitalism, which you probably never heard about it, Geoism, Georgism. But anyway, I'm Dan Tweak, KK6VDR, that's my extra-class ham radio call sign, and this is my fourth try, a small, self-funded, again, campaign, keeping the money out of politics by not raising or spending any. I think governance should be like Bitcoin, or like checking out things from the library, or it should be done peer-to-peer. It should be a disintermediated function where all those shells should become shoulds that we write in laws.
All right, thank you, Daniel. We're going to start with the first question will be with Connie. So Connie, some of the issues in Thousand Oaks are public safety, the environment, open space is very important to the residents here. Share with us how you plan to address these issues and what your specific strategies are to deal with these. So public safety, environment, open space. And you now have 1 minute 30 seconds, candidates, for answers.
So I'll start with public safety. It's a basic and essential function of government. We, as Al mentioned, are one of the nation's safest cities, and this is because we support our local police and first responders, especially under the commander, excuse me, the relationship under Commander Perez specifically works, and I look forward to supporting him if elected. Second, I will say on environmental and open space that it is pertinent and one of the things that make us proud to live in Thousand Oaks and call Thousand Oaks home, and so I would continue to prioritize that, preserving and holding those spaces. Lastly, David, if you could remind me?
Open space.
Oh.
And environment and public safety.
Lovely. So I combined those last two. Apologies. I think for environment, we'll do a lot of, a lot of the things we have seen our city do, but we'll walk, we'll work across government bodies. I'd like to see more solar panels over our schools, parking lots, and really just exercise discretion where we can to help get all of our city governing buildings off the, I would say, off, move to solar power. Goodness, thank you.
Thank you. And Kevin, same question to you. Of course, you're incumbent, so maybe you can share a little of what you've done on these issues, but public safety, the environment, and open space.
Difficult topic in 1 minute 30 seconds, but I'll do my best. Public safety is, I bring to the table that I am a retired reserve officer with the Los Angeles Police Department with the Air Support Division, and I learned a great deal on public safety and how vital it is for a society to exist, because without public safety, anarchy would exist. We have a great relationship with our police here. They treat the residents here with a great deal of courtesy and care and kindness, and we reciprocate back. That's why we have a very low crime rate compared to other cities of a similar size. What I've brought to public safety here in the city is that I brought in license plate readers that we now not only have in Thousand Oaks, but throughout Ventura County. LPRs, as they're called, have been used to catch rapists, armed robbers, bank robbers, as well as car thieves. Public safety, I want to bring those lectures back into our public schools, our private schools, faith-based schools, because we want to keep our children safe. I also had a report of massage practices that were basically sex trafficking. Contacted city attorney, city manager, went to the district attorney, and they closed down some 77 sex-trafficked massage therapy locations throughout the county. So again, these are some of the things I bring for public safety. Last Chilean burglary groups worked in Washington DC, lobbied to have the Chileans' government be included with what's called the ESTA program. They were not, and as a result, we were unable to screen people before they came into the country.
Thank you.
So that's just one of the three you asked, so we'll go from there.
Thank you. Daniel, same question to you about public safety, environment, open space. How will you address these concerns? We're jumping around.
Well, quality of life, public safety, those are always routinely the top concerns of people. I think we would address these if we had a more robust dialogue going on between citizens. We obviously have not provided enough opportunities for civic engagement and policy discussion. I like using, again, you're probably going to hear me say it, again, the best hobby on earth is amateur radio, and with the new digital modes, you can do, you don't even have to get on a microphone. You can just talk keyboard to keyboard and around the world. And I think we probably find that the rest of the world is maybe a little more civically engaged than we are here in North America, in the United States. And that's understandable, because they want the American experiment, you know? That should be available for export, and we should be very proud of it. And for the environment, I'm a big fan of what's called permaculture. It's a combination of the words permanent and agriculture. It's kind of a regenerative form of stewarding the earth, and I am a Christian transhumanist. Jesus was my favorite transhumanist. He has a mandate for us to be caretakers, stewards of this creation, and we should be doing that more aggressively, so I'm going to reach out to our faith institutions with that message as well.
Thank you. Al, we'll come to you next, as far as your areas where you feel you've accomplished something and you want to work on it going forward: public safety, environment, and open space.
Yeah, thank you. Public safety, as I mentioned, a number-one priority of any elected official. Our biggest budget expenditure each year is on public safety. It's about $35 million a year. I've been endorsed by the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association because they know I'm behind them. We just opened the Ventura County Sheriff's Department office at the mall to recruit new people to the force and to train those that are already in the force. It's one of my top priorities, and I'm fully behind the Sheriff's Department. As far as the environment, we just culminated four years of study with our Climate and Environment Action Plan, which is a good plan. We identified greenhouse gases. By 2033, we have to comply with the state to bring greenhouse gases down to 1990s level, and we're going to do that for a number of different ways. We're electrifying buildings, we're promoting electric vehicles, but most importantly, we're not sprawling out anymore. We're building along the 101 corridor, particularly Thousand Oaks Boulevard, so the vehicle miles traveled are down, and so are the greenhouse gases. As far as the open space, I just voted against a project that was a developer wanted to put in our open spaces. As a matter of fact, out in Newbury Park, didn't make any sense to me. The time of sprawling out and past our boundaries is over. We want to build from within and protect our open space.
Thank you. Brent, same question to you.
Sure. The safety of our community is nonnegotiable. Thousand Oaks has long been considered one of the safest cities in California, and I'm committed to keeping it that way. As we face new challenges from natural disasters, earthquakes, and fire, public health concerns, and shifts in crime trends, people moving in from the larger Los Angeles community into our community, we must ensure that our law enforcement, emergency services, and public health systems are fully supported. First and foremost, I will work closely with our local police department and fire services to ensure that they have the resources they need to continue providing top-tier service to our community. This includes advocating for advanced training, technology, and personnel that will help them address evolving threats while maintaining the trust and confidence of the residents. I also believe that community involvement is key to public safety. By fostering strong relationships with law enforcement and neighborhoods, we can create a proactive, collaborative approach to keeping our city safe. Programs that encourage neighborhood watch groups, mental health awareness, and youth engagement are critical to preventing issues before they arise. Open space also has to do with building new homes. People in Thousand Oaks need new homes. We can't take up open space to do that. There's plenty of opportunities for commercial spaces to be converted into infill housing, to build for rent and to own condos for millennials. Millennials need a place to live, and we can't take open space to do it. We need to, you know, take charge of this so people can have equity in the place they grew up in.
Thank you, Brent. And Jeff, now your turn has come to speak about your views on public safety, the environment, and open space.
I agree with all the candidates here that public safety is paramount and an important, vital function for our government. We do a great job here in Ventura County and Thousand Oaks. We should continue to do that. We should continue to support our firefighters and police and provide them with all the resources they need. In addition, we should also make a statement that we take the Second Amendment very seriously in this city. I would like to declare this city a Second Amendment sanctuary city. I would like to see a committee look at any of the 20,000 gun control laws that are currently on the books and find if any of these are unconstitutional, and if so, I think we should advise our police to not make it a priority to arrest people for unconstitutional laws. For the environment, there are many private solutions for the environmental issues of our day. For example, we could let some of our open spaces be run by private groups that care about the environment, for example, the Audubon Society, and let them manage it. And in far as open spaces are concerned, I know it's a top priority for our citizens, and we want to keep the open spaces that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start with you, Brent, on the next question, and this is about homelessness. Tell us, Brent, what's your plan to deal with homelessness, to clean it up, to improve the city regarding that issue?
Sure. It's a hot topic, and this is something I think a lot about, and I speak with my friends and my peers about this, and my wife. You know, it's uncomfortable to go in front of the, to the Ralphs or the Vons and to see a homeless person there with their sign, or the edge of a street corner and see a homeless person there. It's something that the residents of Thousand Oaks are uncomfortable with. I think the current city council has done a phenomenal job at creating the Navigation Center. I give them a lot of credit for this, and there is now resources for these people to go to. This is a gray area. There's somebody who is a single mother who was working two jobs and can't afford to pay the rent, now lost her home. You know, now these resources will be there, the programs are there to help her. There's another thing of someone who wants to drink a fifth of Jack Daniels and walk down Thousand Oaks Boulevard and has no, they do not want to fit into society. They want to be homeless. They like their lifestyle, and they do not want to change. I think that when a situation like this arises, we need to bring in local law enforcement and have someone like this removed from our community. I am strongly for mental health. I am strongly for all the systems and programs that Thousand Oaks has put in place. They've done a phenomenal job. I give huge credit for that. But some people, they just don't want to take these programs. So I am all about rehabilitating people, getting them back with job training and providing those resources, but not everybody can be helped. That's my stance on it.
Thank you. Daniel, what is your position, your plans to clean up the homelessness problem?
Yeah, it's a problem around the world of shelter. And actually, you know, this is a water planet, and we should really be looking at shelters that are basically houseboats. I think that you could build a houseboat pretty cheap, and if the big earthquake hits, hey, you're basically safe because your auxiliary dwelling unit is all, you know, sitting on pontoons and whatnot. Actually, we can 3D print shelters. We could probably 3D print amphibious shelters, for that matter. You know, our latest addition to the Cal State college system is Channel Islands down there, and they are probably in a great position to put people to work on amphibious vessels, doing things like growing and harvesting kelp and doing mariculture and growing bio-bass. In fact, I was part of the Giga Carbon X Prize team that decided, analyzed how could we take billions of tons of carbon out of our atmosphere? And actually, a 40-kilometer-wide belt at the equator, growing kelp and hemp, papyrus, et cetera, would actually pull out the requisite needed imbalance of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. The equator is, we call it sequatoria, by the way, and it's basically got the potential to be like a global community science project, kind of life ring for Planet Earth. And we've got to do stuff like this, because the economic singularity is coming on fast and strong, folks.
Thank you. Connie, same question to you. What are your plans to clean up the homelessness?
I will focus on increasing affordable housing options and collaborating with nonprofits to provide essential services. Addressing homelessness requires both compassion, care, and long-term solutions. The perfect example of this is my own. 26 years ago, I found myself with my family unhoused for three years, and actually, the community of Thousand Oaks alongside Habitat for Humanity built my home. It was my childhood home, and it absolutely changed the trajectory of my life and my siblings' life, and I believe in approaching the solutions, moving forward with that same compassion and intent to create more pathways to homeownership and resources. Of course, there are always exceptions to the resources that one is willing to accept, but I would consider those the outliers. Secondarily, I think that we are unique in Thousand Oaks, that the majority of our unhoused are actually neighbors. There are 70% of them from Thousand Oaks, and I think we could do more along the same pathways we are providing now with the Navigation Center and with the new development off of, over at, oh goodness, off of Hillcrest that will provide some housing affordable for purchase.
Thank you, Connie. Stop you there. Jeff, you're up next. Tell us your plans to deal with homelessness.
On a positive note, we should do everything possible to promote market-rate affordable housing in our community. That means cutting red tape, cutting regulations, and allowing the market to build houses that are less expensive. There's too much red tape right now that prevents that from happening. In addition, we have to look at reducing taxes, reducing the expense of government. This will reduce inflation and put more money in people's pockets and make, give people much more of an incentive to go back to work. And then finally, we have to rethink the taxpayer-paid housing projects that have been going on longer than most taxpayers or voters know. It's been going on for 87 years, since 1937, the Federal Housing Act. That's when they started taxpayer-funded housing for the poor and homeless. Now, they've had 87 years to do it. Have they done a good job over 87 years? No. They've just spent more and more money, like, for example, San Francisco, Los Angeles. The more money they put into it, the more they waste. We wasted millions on the Shangri-La Quality Inn project, where money was spent on Ferrari and Bentley luxury cars, Beverly Hills rentals, and a $111,000 designer handbag. That must stop.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next candidate, Al Adam. Share with us your plans to clean up homelessness.
Thank you. Yeah, we have approximately 200 homeless people in the city of Thousand Oaks, and we are dealing with it in two ways. There's a law enforcement issue. We cleaned up the boardwalk, that's that area behind CBS, and now we have an IKEA going there, and Senior Living Center is very happy that that happened. And we cleaned up our two libraries. We had a lot of problems at those two sites. But on the other hand, and we returned those public spaces to the public. On the other hand, we have practical methods in place to give shelter to the homeless people. We're building a navigation center out in Lawrence Drive. It's going to have 50 units in it. It'll be done sometime this fall. That's a great start, and that's for temporary housing. And we are optimistic that the Quality Inn project can be resurrected. There's certainly a problem between the provider, Shangri-La, and the state of California. However, we are optimistic that that project can be resurrected, and we can proceed with permanent supporting housing there. To continue to criticize that Quality Inn project does only one thing: penalizes the homeless people that we're trying to help. All right? We have a problem there, and we're working very hard on a solution, and I think we're going to be able to solve it, and that's going to be a missing piece of the puzzle about how we give shelter and hope to our homeless population.
Thank you. Kevin, we'll wrap up with you. What are your plans to clean up homelessness?
Thank you, David. 35 years ago, when I was in my clinical rotations as a chiropractor and acupuncturist, I worked with the homeless in downtown LA with the Salvation Army and Goodwill, did history exams, treatment on those people that were homeless. Many of them were drug addicted. Many of them were drug addicted. My experience with law enforcement as a police officer, I will tell you that 80% of the homeless are drug addicted and/or mentally ill. The other 20% are mom and dad that just need a safe place to get back up on their feet for six, eight, 10 months. The solution that we have right now is called Project Home Key, where the state gives the county the money, county gives it to the cities. We're supposed to provide brick and mortar to address the needs, to get them lifted out of the homeless situation. It is a failed system. Look at San Francisco, Portland, Seattle. It does not work. My suggestion is that we centralize all the homeless services in one location in the county. When they come to Lutheran Social Services here in Thousand Oaks, they're looking for their three meals a day. Meals are what brings them in. Tell them to get on the van or bus, ship them out there, nine o'clock, 11 o'clock, one and three, and have them come back in the evening if they don't want to go into the in-service. You get them off the street for the day, they're in a safe environment, meet with social workers. Possibly they desire to go into the in-resident services to have a leg up. I know these people on a first-name basis. My practice over here on Hillcrest and Moore Park, I know them on a first-name basis. They would say, "Mayor, I want a job." And I'll say, "I'm working on it."
Thank you Kevin. But we're going to stay with you and start the next question with you Kevin. Sticking with sort of the housing theme, let's talk about affordable housing or trying to get it more affordable. It's questionable if anything's affordable anymore. But what are your plans to create affordable housing and to be able to keep our young people here in the community where they can buy a starter home and grow their families?
Excellent question. On one hand, I have parents that come to me and say, "I want to have my children be able to live here in Thousand Oaks, but it costs too much for them." I tell them on one hand, "I hear you, but it depends on the housing supply. As soon as supply exceeds demand, that's when prices will come down. So we're going to try to build more houses, but we're 98% built out." Those days of cattle and sheep and goats and horses, our ranches are gone. We're 98% built out. We have nowhere else to really build land or build houses. So we have infill right now is the best we can do. When I talked to Matthew Fienep, our economist from Cal Lutheran, I said, "Well, give me a number." He says Venture Accounting needs 30,000 more homes in order to start seeing the prices drop. We're doing our part with our general plan. We have allocated some new housing to be built here. Our problem is, we have got a gem of California here where people want to live. People want to get out of that hellhole called Los Angeles and are moving out here, selling their $5 million home to buy a 1 million, 1.5 million, and it prices our local residents out of the market. I have solutions to it. My challenge David, this is not an adequate amount of time, but we can do it. I'm not looking for low-income housing, I'm looking for increased supply, which we can do. And there's areas and opportunity sites here within the city that we can help provide housing to help lower the prices. Thank you David.
Thank you. And a tip to all candidates, if there's something you feel you missed, you always have your closing statement where you can put a little bit more time in on anything. Al, we're going to come to you on the question of how do we create more housing to keep our young people here, make it more affordable?
Yeah, we're playing catch-up on housing. For many years, we were way behind the curve, but we have approved approximately 1,500 units of housing in the last couple of years. That's more than we approved in the last 10. And of those 1,500 units, about 250 are affordable workforce units. The T.O. Ranch Project, for example, has 55 units of affordable housing, including, it's the biggest amount of affordable housing we've ever approved in any project in the city of Thousand Oaks. We've got, and as far, it's not just renting. I mean, I want young people to be able to get a start in the city, just like we all did when we bought our homes. There needs to be some appreciation potential as well. So the city stepped in and bought the Hillcrest site. We paid for the land. The developer will now offer condos there, X the land cost, therefore being able to offer those condos at a much more affordable price, maybe in the 300, 400, $500,000 range, way less than what they're selling for in market. So we're going to get 77 people started at those units. You know, it's a, it's a question of supply and demand, but we're starting to increase the supply. Hopefully that'll catch up with the demand and rents will come down because we are losing young people in this city. We're down in our population, our school district's down, and we need to keep young people here. Believe me, I know, I have two 26-year-old daughters that don't happen to live in Thousand Oaks, and I wish they did. Maybe someday they'll come back.
Thank you. Jeff, same question to you about increasing the supply of housing that's affordable?
Okay. The basics are supply and demand, and the biggest, government is not the solution here, is the problem. It's government that has created all the red tape and regulations that prevent developers and property owners from developing their property and building inexpensive housing. So we need to get rid of the, of the red tape, get rid of the regulations, and then also we need to reduce taxes. Because when we reduce taxes, there's less money going to the government programs and more money in your pocket, and you can afford to buy better housing. And then I disagree completely with my opponent's discussion about the Hillcrest tax subsidized project. These tax subsidized projects are a big drain on the taxpayer. We end up paying more taxes. The expenses are astronomical in terms of all the government bureaucracy that goes on not only building them, but maintaining these properties. So I say we need less of the tax-funded and more private market, free-market solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Connie, you're up next.
I look forward to seeing the general plan update come to fruition. There are a lot of units that are scheduled to come on the market. But secondarily, I think moving forward, we avoid projects like the lakes where we sold property at a discount and then received no affordable housing units in return. And then more importantly, for homeowner, current homeowners, I think we should look to the state and lobby for better interest rates, as most of us who are homeowners are now facing that battle, and we've already made it into homeownership. So I think it's twofold, gaining more pathways into homeownership and then securing homeownership thereafter.
Thank you. And next up is Daniel. Same question to you about increasing the supply of housing where our young people could afford.
Yeah, we're, have an aging population here. I'm turning 64 in a little bit, and I take care of someone who's 80 years old and will live in home care aid. But it occurs to me that we've got a supply of young students in places like Cal Lutheran, and a lot of them are looking for situations that might be like a work exchange for, for temporary housing. I think the city could foster this kind of venture by setting up what are called skill shares or time banks, where people can trade units of time amongst each other. This is already not a taxable thing according to the IRS, and there's thousands of them that have been set up. But I used to live in a place where I could work off part of my rent by doing stuff that needed to be done around the property. So I think the city could sort of encourage that through various ways. Shared housing, co-housing. If more people again get into hobby like amateur radio, they would probably meet all kinds of like-minded people and opportunities to do exchanges, work for rent and stuff like that. And then there's the micro kind of hotels, like the little Japanese micro hotels that you see in airports and things. Because really, all you need is a place to be out of the weather at night. I mean, you don't need a full-blown giant house to, to have housing. And yeah, this would be a vibrant way to have fun housing.
Thank you. We'll wrap up the question with you Brent.
Thank you. Last Tuesday, I met with the Kinnaman Valley Realtors Association, and they asked me the same question, and we were talking about, one of the main concerns was housing for millennials. Say you graduated Thousand Oaks High School and you go away to college, and then you move back and you want to have your life here in Thousand Oaks, and you can't afford to live in the city you were, you were raised in. It's terrible, and it's, you know, it's happened to a lot of my peers that are now in their, you know, late 30s, early 40s. But housing and affordability are pressing concerns, especially for young professionals and seniors. I think being able, the last planning commission meeting was about building AUDs on property. So maybe when they move back in, mom or dad or grandma or grandpa can build in their backyard a sustainable place for them to live while they save up enough rent money to be able to put a down payment on a $1.3 million home. You know, the prices in Thousand Oaks are very expensive. We don't want them to go up because this is a lot of people's retirement. This is their nest egg, is their property value. My vision is when I drive around Thousand Oaks, I see the empty Armstrong Gardens. I see the Black Angus. I see the empty Exxon building, massive complexes, massive areas of land that could be developed into for-sale condos. I looked earlier today, there were seven different California grants that are for infill housing and for this housing crisis that the city council can tap into for funds for these projects. One of them was a trust fund that matches funds. There are possibilities to get these projects off the ground. We just need the right people and place to do so.
Thank you. Jeff, we'll begin the next question with you. Let's talk about the budget, how the city is funded. Share with us two things, your funding priorities Jeff, and also candidates, share with us your experience dealing with large budgets. It's a multimillion-dollar city. Tell us a little bit about your background with large budgets.
Hmm, okay. So the issue in terms of the priority of spending for the city, I believe that I would like to see a reduction in all spending. Now, that doesn't mean going down to zero, but that means trying to trim fat or finding any fat anywhere in the budget. So I would like to see a comprehensive analysis by each department head as to what their top priorities are, what their lowest priorities are. And I would like to start reducing at least the inflation and the increases that we place every year on funding these lower priority items. One of my desires in this campaign is to reduce net taxes. And the only way to reduce taxes, it's like if you want to reduce weight. How do you reduce weight? You have to reduce your, what, the calories you take in. And the only way to reduce taxes is to reduce our spending. And I envision some options as to giving the money back to the taxpayer, including tax credits, tax rebates, and tax offsets. So anything and everything is on the table for reducing our expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to you Brent, your priorities as far as the budget and your experience?
Sure. I think my largest experience dealing with financial budget keeping was when I was, worked at a senior living home. I was a head executive chef for Sunrise Senior Living for five years, and I managed the kitchen there. I got it down to within a cent one year, and I was very excited about my progress. But as far as dealing with large tens of millions of dollars, I do, I do not have that current experience. But my, my goal here is to stay within our AAA credit rating. I know the city of Thousand Oaks has, has been smart enough to even put money into bonds and to, to save for future events and catastrophes. My, my goal here is to not go out and start building all kinds of unnecessary projects. My goal is to stay, stay fiscally sound and even if possible, put money aside. Again, these issues that we're covering, public safety, giving money to the police force, giving money to the housing crisis. And my main concern here is, is the economy. I see so many empty storefronts in the city. I mean, next to the Toppers Pizza, that Wilshire Boulevard, it's been empty nine years. Is there nobody at the city council that's running a marketing team that is reaching out to, to, to organizations, to, this is a family economy. We need businesses for families. Never underestimate the power of a 12-year-old girl to run the family budget, okay? They, they are telling us, you know, what we're going to do, where we're going to go this weekend, mom and dad. So these family-oriented businesses need to fill these spaces. If we fill that Exxon building with, with Meta or Amazon, that Jan's Mall and Oaks Mall will be packed full of people.
Thank you Brent.
Sure.
Al, same question to you about budget priorities and experience?
Yeah, I've been a financial advisor for 45 years. I'm very familiar with how the financial markets work, bond markets, interest rates, investments, and I think that's really paid off here in the city. As, as was mentioned, we have a AAA credit rating and we've invested very wisely. We have surpluses that we've actually accrued here in the city. As far as lowering taxes in the city, that's going to be pretty tough, considering the only tax that we have is the sales taxes, and the lowest sales tax that the state allows, seven and a quarter percent. Oxnard's at nine and a quarter. There's some cities in Los Angeles at 11. So it just doesn't go any lower than seven and a quarter. I've been pressured to raise that, but it's never going to happen as far as I'm concerned. The city gets its revenue from other places, hotel tax, vehicle license fees. We get a little bit of property taxes that the county's in charge of, not us. We get about 10% of that. So we have a pretty good fee flow coming into the city. But this, this business of lowering taxes, if you think you're going to lower taxes from the city council, you're, you're running for the R.A. Office. You better go to the county or go to the state because we have the lowest sales tax in the city. I know, I just bought a car and it was great to pay seven and a quarter percent on the purchase of that car. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel, same question to you, budget priorities and experience?
Well, I had a paper out one time, but I think, I did write a request for quotation on the Glen Canyon Dam Penstock Rehab. That was a multimillion-dollar project when I was in the environmental business. But I, I think by getting rid of middle, middle people, disintermediation, you know, like I was talking about cryptocurrency allows person-to-person, peer-to-peer transfer. Make things peer-to-peer, make them open source, you know, use a credit union instead of a bank. You know, a credit union is a cooperative, and we don't pay enough attention to cooperative modes of doing things. And there's kind of an interesting study that says, one-third of the people will always cooperate, one-third will never cooperate, and the middle third will kind of follow the majority, whatever they're doing. So if you, we account for things like that. In human nature, we can make economic progress. We need to circularize the economy. We need a regenerative economy. We need a zero-waste economy. We should be tracking all the inflows and outflows at the granular level, which is why I love they've divided the city into districts now, because we're actually granularizing that, that data. And there's a way to actually track every 10-foot square on earth with three words from the dictionary. It's called what three words? It's like, every 10-foot square on earth has a three-word name. It was some people that wanted to order pizza in the middle of a concert, and I think this, they invented this app so they could be found. But we could be using that to do micro-analysis of the city.
Thank you. And Kevin, same question to you.
Thank you. The last 35 years, I have run a very successful practice managing the budget, profit-loss statement, balance sheet, cash flow. I also had a 26-year company of medical supply equipments that I imported from around the world and distributed through the United States, being one of the largest distributors of Asian medicine products. That budget there was 1.5 million. On council for the last four years, have had to look at the budget annually, and I have to say that our budget director, financial director, Jamie Boscarino, does a superb job. 80% of our revenue comes in from sales tax, and that is a great place for it to be because it's based on what you find value in purchasing. We keep business tax very low, which attracts businesses to our location. I so enjoy when I go out to meet other mayors and council members from Westlake and Agora. Keep your tax, your sales tax high, please. It's great for our business because your people come into our city to purchase. Please keep doing it. Yet, they don't seem to want to lower their sales tax because the more money you have in your pocket, the more likely you're going to buy product and service from your neighbor and all the people around you. Police fire is a priority, takes a big chunk of our budget, but we value our police and fire because we love public safety. I would like to say that I did five focus groups when I was first on council to make government more efficient, and I have to tell you that we have moved forward with some of those plans and have made government more efficient to reduce costs to you.
Thank you Kevin. And Connie, we'll wrap up this question with you.
I have a 15-year-plus career in HR, serving in industries like ad tech and aerospace, government contracting specifically. And I've worked with, or I've worked and directed scaling teams globally and managing budgets upwards of $2 to $3 million depending on the office that we were opening. I've also created local partnerships with some of our local universities and managed those program investments that were moving towards recruitment and the outcomes to make sure that it was fruitful for us to spend each dollar. I have done this for quite some time and very successfully for being, and well-being creative with the dollars we have and fiscally responsible with every budget that I've had purview over.
And your budget priorities if elected?
Oh, yes. If elected, I think first and foremost, my, my budget priorities would fall within, would fall within the arts and, and working towards initiatives that would create more public spaces for cultural events. And then secondarily, would be transportation infrastructure. It continues to be a shortcoming of our city, and I'd like to see it expand to the benefit of our community.
Thank you. We're going to start the next question with you Daniel. This isn't so much policy, but... This isn't so much policy, but it's, let's learn a little bit about you. Any city council person serves on a variety of regional boards and commissions. Daniel, if you're elected, what regional boards or commissions would you like to serve on and why?
Well, that's a great question. I'm actually a member of the Friends of the Library, and I was just talking to Eileen, thanking me for being a member, and I said, oh, I have all these cool ideas we should be doing at the library, like booths, where people can do books for the blind, or do an audio production, they need a soundproof booth there, we can get life stories collected from people. I go to the Goble Senior Center a lot, I'd like to see more interlinkage between the teen center and the senior center, there should be more shared events, because we're not capturing all this intergenerational knowledge, you know, when an old person dies, it's like a library burning down. So, we're not doing a good job of capturing all this great institutional knowledge civilization. I did apply to be on the Aging Commission, since I'm taking care of an elder with cognitive issues. Didn't, didn't get that, I'll try again maybe, but I am the Community Science Director for the United States Transhumanist Party. You can see their information at transhumanist-party.org, and I'm also their National Vice President candidate this time, running with Tom Ross, so that should be an interesting write-in effort. It is the 10th time that we've run a national candidate as a, as an alternative party, but, you know, we're about putting science, health, and technology at the forefront of policy, and I think that's, should be a philosophy that every city in the world should follow.
Thank you, Daniel. Jeff, same question to you, what regional boards and commissions would you like to serve on and why?
I'm interested in serving on the Ventura County Transportation Commission. I'm interested in looking at, discussing, and thinking about free-market solutions for the transportation needs in our county. For example, I have visited the bus facility in Thousand Oaks, near the Rolling Oaks Boulevard, and that facility is, every time I've been there, it's close to empty. The buses are often close to empty or empty, the facility itself is empty, and so, to me, this is an example where government had great goals and great vision, but the market actually doesn't seem to have the demand for it at this time. So, I would like to see deregulation. I would see, like to see less laws and regulations that prevent private market solutions, such as maybe somebody setting up their own mini-bus company to shuttle people around, I'd love to see something like that. So, I think there are a lot of free-market possibilities, and that would be a commission I'd be interested in. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, same question to you.
When you join city council, you have to serve on several committees, and hopefully they match your expertise with it. My background is an engineer from UCLA, as well as I've got two degrees in water treatment and wastewater treatment. I serve the city on the Ventura County Association of Water Agencies, where we try to regionally address water solutions for the challenges we face here in the area. I also serve on the Public Safety Committee, because of my law enforcement background with the California League of Cities, trying to find solutions to the high crime that has increased. Now, we talk about Thousand Oaks being safe, well, it's safe compared to the others. Crime has gone up in Thousand Oaks, crime has gone up in all cities throughout California, but those are the two areas I bring my expertise of water management, as well as law enforcement. Regarding the water, I am looking towards stormwater capture and reuse, wastewater capture, treatment, and reuse. Based on my calculations, we can get 60 to 80% independent from Metropolitan Water District, so we don't have to rely on them, we rely on us, and lower everyone's water rates per household of $600, moving forward with one of the four plans that I've submitted and we've been discussing with city staff. To me, that's bringing water treatment into the 21st century that all cities in California need to do. Thank you, David.
Brent, what boards and commissions would you like to serve on and why?
I'm not familiar with every, all of the boards, but I, I do, I would say the Thousand Oaks Arts Commission. I reached out to them, I was going to be on the, interview to be on the board, but they said I couldn't do city council and be on that board. I just think that the concerts in the park and the concerts at the Janes Mall bring the community together and are absolutely amazing. I actually donated my voice for the, for the advertisement for the 30th Anniversary Masquerade Ball, so if you see that spot run on TV, you'll hear me, which I'm very excited about. But in my entertainment background, there's nothing that brings community together like, like music, and I think these, these gatherings of people, it really shows, you know, we all, we all work and we're all stressed, but when we get together and we celebrate the arts, we celebrate a, a, kind of paintings and sort of these art galleries and walk through exhibits. Within Thousand Oaks, there's no sort, there's no sort of perk that I can walk through and, and see murals, or see celebration of Thousand Oaks' history within murals. Janes Mall did it a little bit on the side of the, the Bucatiba, which I really love, celebrating our history through arts. I also think the, the Thousand Oaks TO Arts Council could put on a, a senior citizen recognition gala. What about the people who have dedicated 40 years of their life to this city? What about the, the oldest married couple in the City of Thousand Oaks? Why are we not renting out the Los Robles Greens and celebrating the people who built this community? Also, why aren't we so engaging with the teenagers who are on social media? The Thousand Oaks Arts Commission could put a TikTok shop or Instagram shop at the teen center, these, these lead to jobs. You can make $85,000 as a social media manager.
Thank you, Brent.
If they're making the TikToks, get a job.
Stop you there. Connie, what boards and commissions would you like to serve on? Connie?
Um, I'd like to sit on the Transportation and Planning Commission, for the reasons I listed earlier. I think we could do more to serve our community in that space, as well as we move forward with a walkable Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and I think it should go hand-in-hand with planning, specifically, because as we build more residential areas, and we need to address parking and things of that nature, transportation is a huge conduit to solving for those needs that could create an imbalancement for the quality of life that our current neighbors we all experience and love.
Thank you. Al, what commissions and boards?
Oh, yes, thank you. Well, I've been in this, I have lived in this community for 47 years, I'm a Managing Director of Investments and a Financial Advisor. I've been on a few boards and committees over the years. I started with the YMCA, I was a board chair of the Southeast Ventura County YMCA, great way to meet people and help young kids. I love the arts, I became a founder for the arts and a member of the Alliance for the Arts Board of Governors, I worked on that for a while. Currently, I am on the Finance Audit Committee, in charge of looking at how the city invests their money, and we invest it very conservatively, by the way, we've never lost a dime. I'm on the Campus Master Plan Committee to try to redo this entire area that we're sitting in, I like to call it the Downtown Master Plan. What else? Oh, I've served on the Ventura Council of Governments, which is a great board, all 10 cities are represented, and it's a great way to network with different cities and find out what's going on in the county that we live in. I'm a representative to the Southern California Association of Governments, which is the six counties here in Southern California, and we meet periodically to discuss big issues that affects Southern Californians. So, I guess the question is, what board have I not served on, maybe, David, right? It, it's a great way to get to know people and build relationships, and this business that we're in is about relationships, it's knowing people, knowing how they feel, and getting things done, and serving on boards and commissions allow you to do that.
Thank you, Al. Kevin, I'm gonna start with you, and candidates, I think you could do two questions in this minute and a half, these are very specific questions. So, Kevin, ready? First half of the question is, what can be done to lower the Dial-A-Ride $4 fee for low-income residents who depend on the service? So, we're gonna talk about Dial-A-Ride, and also, do you have any ideas about lowering the cost of home insurance in some of the fire zones? Dial-A-Ride, let's see how well they do, okay? Let's put them on the, put their feet to the fire. So, Kevin, Dial-A-Ride, can you do anything to lower the fee, and any thoughts about home insurance?
Funny you should ask that, I just handled a complaint from a resident regarding the TO Transit, which again ties in with Dial-A-Ride, is that they were waiting two hours for the ride that was supposed to arrive, and they're out there in the heat waiting for it, and I says to our city manager through an email, I says, why aren't we doing what Uber and Lyft do, and that you have on your smartphone a map as to where that driver is and how soon will they be there, so that way the person's not waiting outside? That also adds to efficiencies, which would decrease the cost for the rides for the TO Transit. We need to allow and have that available. Oftentimes, ladies and gentlemen, you're gonna find both the bus service and TO Transit is a negative, we lose money on it, but it's a quality of life that we want to maintain, so city oftentimes subsidizes that, so that way we're able to keep seniors being able to move around and be part of this community. The second part of that question, sir?
Home insurance?
Home insurance. Again, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I was talking with a homeowner who had an issue where an oak tree limb was hanging out over the, over the house, had two options, pay thousands of dollars, go through the permits in Arborist, or not get it cut back and lose their homeowner's insurance, or their homeowner's insurance was gonna double. So, we're gonna be reopening the current tree ordinance and see if we can find some happy compromise there. What is currently on the books was appropriate when it was originally written years ago, things have changed, we have to go back and revisit that to reduce costs for insurance.
Thank you. Al, same question to you, what can be done to lower Dial-A-Ride service, and what can be done about the high cost of house insurance?
Yeah, Dial-A-Ride's our most popular service in TO Transit, it's used widely, it's a, a great service, it's pretty cheap as it is right now, there's a huge demand for it, sometimes we have trouble meeting the demand. One of the big problems we have are when it comes to disabled passengers. I was just in Washington DC lobbying for new paratransit vehicles for Dial-A-Ride, which are state-of-the-art, which will help disabled people board and, and get off the, off the vehicle, and that's one of the reasons Dial-A-Ride sometimes gets, gets behind, because we have to help our disabled folks. So, we're, I think we have a really good chance of getting three or four new paratransit vehicles here in the city. As far as insurance, did you say homeowner's insurance, or?
Just the cost of insuring your home.
Just in general, yeah. Well, I know fire insurance is through the roof, I can tell you, at my house it is, so that's one area that I think Commissioner Lara has to work on a little bit, and lure some of these insurance companies back to the state of California that have recently left, that's a problem for him. As far as fire insurance goes, if you, we have Fire Safe Council, and you can apply to be a fire-safe community or homeowners association. We have four or five in the city right now, one of my fellow council members, Bob Angler's community, is a fire-safe community, and if you get that, it potentially brings down your fire insurance premiums.
Thank you. Jeff, same questions to you, lowering the fee for Dial-A-Ride, especially for low-income residents, and lowering the cost of home insurance, fire insurance?
Okay, so, one of the things we can do to lower the cost of transportation is to reduce red tape and regulations and allow free-market competition to bring down the price of these services. If we are giving out contracts to any particular agency to provide these services, let's put them up for open competitive bidding, and that can help bring down the cost of these services. As far as lowering the cost of home insurance, I was speaking with the Association of Realtors last week, and they back a plan that is also backed by the Ventura County Fire Authority, and it's many prongs to it, includes teaching the homeowners to harden their homes against fire hazards, also managing vegetation on public land, including application of herbicides, or even some, some residents have asked me about the idea of putting animals on the public lands to eat the vegetation. So, we, those plans are already in writing, and I suggest we continue to push those plans further to reduce the risk of fires.
Thank you. Connie, same question to you about Dial-A-Ride and fire insurance?
For Dial-A-Ride, I'd like to see a pilot of some sort to create a volunteer arm for this service that we provide to our seniors, as well as using our regular transportation stops as a secondary route for the Dial-A-Ride, to get you closer and more directly to the place that you're looking to be. Some of our bus routes go around town before they hit the stop that you're looking for, and if you're on the wrong side of the street, you're along for that ride, so I think supplementing there could help cut costs. And second, for the home insurance, I mentioned this earlier, I think council members can do what they can to have conversations with our state representatives to create some type of cap, or address the price gouging that we're experiencing, more, more specifically here in California, and additionally, the city could provide more education and programs to assist residents with house hardening and things of that nature, so they can help their neighborhoods also become more fire preventive.
Thank you. And Daniel, before I start with you, just an announcement, I'm only gonna be able to get one more question in, I see a few cards coming down, so I apologize in advance, we're not gonna have enough time to get them all in. But Daniel, same question to you, as far as Dial-A-Ride and fire insurance?
Yeah, I think it would be in order to have the city do a cost study to see about, possibly a partnership with existing ride services like Uber and Lyft. Of course, for the paratransport, we're probably still gonna need the specialized vans for that, but it's kind of funny, I did get asked a question by, when in one of my previous runs for the council, was my, what's my opinion on personal drone-type Lyft vehicles, you know, air taxis, because, you know, they're probably coming, in a, in a few years, I think we'll have low-cost air taxis, so we should be allowing for landing areas and takeoff areas for those, and speaking of that, drones can be used for lifesaving, not only in moving these AEDs, these Automated External Defibrillators, to scenes of people having cardiac events, but you can do fog spraying from drones, which is a very efficient way to use firefighting water. And for the homeowner's insurance, I, I think the city could explore maybe a municipal cooperative to provide at-cost insurance to the residents, it should be, you know, the city's basically a municipal corporation, and the cities are all kind of shareholders, so we should be approaching all the policies that the city provides from that viewpoint. So, a lot of potential feasibility studies in order there. Thanks for the question.
Thank you. And we will finish up with Brent.
When I told my neighbor, Daria, that I was running for city council, the first thing she said to me was, try to get Dial-A-Ride to be cheaper, I believe she said it was $8, and she said that that was too much for people going back and forth to the senior center. And if we can't lower it, why don't we create more revenue streams? Now, we could, we could solve the problem in one day. Behind the Goble Senior Center, we just have a 60s or 70s themed event with food trucks and a celebration of the senior citizens in our community. Within that one day, the donations would be enough to cut, to subsidize and/or cover the rides for the entire year. Also, what about a merchandising shop for the City of Thousand Oaks? If you ever go to Mammoth Lakes, everyone in Mammoth Lakes has the Mammoth Lakes hoodie, they have the Mammoth Lakes sticker on their car, and they're very proud. Why doesn't the City of Thousand Oaks have a merchandise shop? Basic t-shirts, stickers, hats, they're affordable, that can cover the cost of these, of the Dial-A-Ride program. And if we can't, you know, why don't we just make up the revenue somewhere else, and creative ideas? You see people in Thousand Oaks when they get together for these, for these events, the Caneo Valley Days, the, the plays at the Civic Arts Plaza, people like to get together, they're okay with bringing their families and spending 10, 15, 20, 30 dollars for these events. I think it's a great idea, and it's something, how do we make it fun? How do we bring families into this? And people would love that idea. As far as fire insurance, I would just suggest most of these homes that are backed up to open space would just have maybe a 20, 30-yard clearance, and incentivize homeowners to do that themselves. I'd have to look into that issue a bit further. The Realtors were concerned about the oak trees and the fire insurance, the fire insurance for the oak tree trimming as well, so I have to look into that further.
All right, thank you. And we're gonna begin the last question with you, Connie, and we're gonna, we have not talked about climate change, quality of life, sustainability, those issues. So, Connie, looking at the, what type of programs would you support or recommend to help the city reach various sustainability goals? What are your views about water and plans to make the city more water resilient, such as new construction could require gray water, those types of things, and just preparing for the climate change effects? So, broad picture, climate change, water, sustainability?
Yeah. So, when we talk about quality of life... So, when we talk about quality of life, we definitely are talking about its sustainability here in town, and I think we can do our job to require developers to lean in on that front with us in meeting those goals. Things like gray water and preparing and outfitting new development to meet those standards and exceed the state requirements would be beneficial to the local quality of life. And I also would like to see more creative outlets for our sustainable efforts. I mentioned earlier, creating pathways to work in conjunction with other areas for solar panels. I think that's an easy win for both our school district and our city and moving towards climate change. Secondarily, the biggest or the largest use of water in town is with our business, lives within our business, industrial areas, and they have lovely green lawns and a lot of beautiful landscaping, but that takes a lot of unnecessary water. And maybe creating a pact within our town to encourage them and incentivize that they go to desert landscaping.
Thank you. Kevin, same question to you. Water resilience, climate change, sustainability goals?
Great question. The City of Thousand Oaks sends the council members back once a year to Washington DC to lobby for funds to bring back to Thousand Oaks for things that we want. Things such as EV chargers, solar panels at our various parks and libraries and so forth. So, that is our effort. Now, we've been under the guidance of Dr. Helen Cox, who has just retired, and we're on track for what we're doing to help reduce our carbon footprint through various methods here in the city from the city perspective. Very proud of that fact. We have, look at water resilience. Again, I talked about sustainability, using stormwater capture and reuse, wastewater capture and reuse, reducing our homes' water bills at the end of the year by $600 per household. To me, that's very doable, and again, it's something that other cities are doing. We need to do the same. I have to tell you that we do a good job here in Thousand Oaks from a city perspective on reducing our footprint, EVs. I think it was 1.8 million we brought back, Al, and this year, I think it was, what, 10, $20 million from Washington DC to do sustainability. I think we do a good job with it here, and I want to continue as we move forward with projects in the future. If all goes well and I get elected in November, I'll be back there again in March in Washington trying to bring back dollars from Washington DC to improve the quality of life here in Thousand Oaks. David?
Thank you. Same question to you, Daniel.
Well, we need to think as, think of the earth as a spaceship and have spaceship-wide solutions. Take advantage of things like marine cloud brightening. See, right now, there is roughly about 1,000 watts of solar energy hitting every square meter of the earth. At least, that's the maximum amount. It varies. But that needs to be tracked and moderated through various ways, increasing the reflectivity. We should be doing little things like people paint their roofs white, you know? They should get a credit for something like that. They should be carpooling, using electric vehicles, but, you know, and I think it was Mikey Taylor that talked about just sticking a pipe down in the ocean. There's enough pressure at the bottom of that pipe. If you have a reverse osmosis membrane, you kind of have just unlimited fresh water coming out of the top. So, we could make habitats bloom with that kind of freshwater technology. We need to not think in terms of sustainability, but regenerativity and making our cities more Eden-like. There's actually a guy, Kev Polk, who has a site called Edenicity, which is making Eden-like cities. And he will let you put in parameters about details of your city, and he'll give you a number, like a scientific index of how close you are on the Edenicity index. And we can do digital twins to see what our cities should look like in virtual reality and go to town.
Thank you, Daniel. Al, same question to you about water quality, sustainability, and climate change.
Yeah, Thousand Oaks is a green city. I can tell you that. Two years ago, maybe it was three, we joined the Clean Power Alliance, which gives residents and the city the choice to go with 100% sustainable energy for electricity. That dropped greenhouse gases from 36% down to six. This is a huge move for the city, and it's really paying off. Greenhouse gases are what causes climate change and global warming. We're trying to design the city to get away from that. We want to get out of our cars, build housing where people can walk and not drive because 60% of greenhouse gases are caused by vehicles. As far as water, yes, we are 100% reliant on imported water from Metro Water District in Lake Oroville. How are we coping with that? One way, we've actually started to tap groundwater at Las Robles Golf Course. It's been there all the time, and it's percolating to the surface, and it's there for us to use. We're going to funnel it to the Las Vergias Municipal Water District, water treatment plant that they're building, and bring it back to us clean and ready to use. It should supply about 10% of our water needs. We are electrifying our buildings to cut down on greenhouse gases. The city itself, we have drought-tolerant landscape everywhere. Look at the front of the Civic Arts Plaza. We have no lawn. Everything's dead, which is fine. We shouldn't have lawns. And so, we're very, very environmentally conscious when it comes to water and when it comes to greenhouse gases.
Thank you. And next up is Brent.
I agree. When I drive around the City of Thousand Oaks and I go through the residential communities, I see a lot of people have converted to a desert-style front yard. I did it at my house. I put in AstroTurf, and it's, I never have to water. It's phenomenal. Also, I think this is going to happen individually. This is going to be home-to-home. Every home is going to have to do their part. I think conservation really is the answer. My grandma would always tell me that the water is running out, and I have to take a shower under 60 seconds. And this is kind of in my programming now. I'm always in and out of there. But also, you know, we didn't run our air this summer at our home. The thermostat hit 91 in the house, and my wife was so proud that she didn't need the air this year. And I was, you know, hesitant on that because I'm in there trying to work and sweating. But, you know, if everyone did their part to kind of find a new tolerance, to kind of go an upper couple extra degrees, and just to be a little uncomfortable for the benefit of the city, like I said, this is going to be, you know, everyone's personal journey to helping the city as a whole. I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on the climate issue because I am not. I will leave this, the rest of this to the professionals, but I know that the City of Thousand Oaks, when I, when I speak with everyone, when I go by these communities, that everyone is doing their part, and it is something that is on everyone's mind. And I believe as a community, we will do what needs to be done.
Thank you. We're going to start closing statements in a moment.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff. Yes, of course. Number six. Jeff, share with us your views about water resilience, sustainability, and climate change.
Water shortages and water misallocations is not a new problem in California. In fact, it's been going on for at least 100 years, if not more. And in this case, as in many cases, government is not necessarily the solution, but government is the problem. The problem has been political allocation and pricing of water. And this has been an issue, again, for 100 years or more. Now, what, not everybody knows this, but more than 85% of the water in this state is used by the agricultural sector. And a very relatively small percentage is used by homeowners like us. So, what is one of the causes? One of the causes is the fact that these agricultural uses are abnormally and artificially subsidized by the government at an extremely artificially low rate, way below market. So, they have way less incentive to conserve compared to us because we're paying about 10 times more per gallon of water than they are. So, this is an issue. Now, what is the solution? The solution is get the government out of this and allow free markets to create its wonders of creating competition, allocating resources properly, and lowering prices. This has been done successfully in the Darling River Basin in Australia, where they used to have shortages, and the free-market solutions improved things tremendously. So, that is something I would look at, is free-market solutions in water.
Thank you. Before we begin the closing statements, couple of announcements for everyone. First of all, the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce and the Acorn Newspapers are collaborating to host a candidate's forum for Thousand Oaks City Council and the Caneo Valley Unified School District Board of Trustees races appearing on the November 5th ballot. That forum will be held at the Lundring Event Center at Cal Lutheran University. It'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Thursday, September 19th. The forum is open to the public and free to attend. You can also watch it be livestreamed on the Chamber's Facebook page. This forum is being recorded on TO TV. It'll be available on the League's website within a few days and also on the TO TV website and maybe broadcast on their channel tonight. I'm not sure. We had quite a few questions. I'm sorry we didn't get to them. I don't even have enough time to really read them all to you. But one of the suggestions from many people was candidates, if you have excess funds, that you should consider donating to nonprofits in the community that would need them. Oh, and by the way, the League of Women Voters in AAUW are nonprofits. Just thought I'd throw that in.
There you go.
I also want to take a moment to thank our League helpers, Pat, Wayne, Kathy, Jill, Monique, Cheryl, and from AAUW, Eileen, Sally, Monique, Rosanna, Narda, Sharon. How about a round of applause for our volunteers? We're going to do the closing statements in the reverse order candidates. We'll start with Daniel, and you have 90 seconds. When you're ready, Daniel.
Well, I just want to say thank you to everyone who is civically engaged enough to consider the future because I don't think enough people do do long-term thinking about the future, but that's critical if we're not going to go extinct as a species. We're actually seemingly in the sixth human-caused mass extinction. There were five mass extinctions before, but, you know, our government's talking about that too much. But I think maybe it's up to, you know, us, the crew. There's a story of a ship in 1991 called the Oceanus that was sinking, and the 15 crew members actually bailed off and abandoned ship, leaving 571 people onboard to fend for themselves. And what had happened is a couple musicians got everyone off the ship safely. So, that's a great metaphor for where Spaceship Earth is right now. We all need to become crew members and save this imperiled, fragile little spaceship. And one thing that does this is that great hobby of amateur radio. And I want to get you to support a bill right now, which is kind of stalled in the House and in the Senate. It's called the Amateur Radio Emergency Preparedness Act. So, write to your congressperson. The House number is 4006. The Senate number is 3690. And this is September is National Emergency Preparedness Month. So, this would be something I would just beseech you to do with my use of this platform to write your congressperson to support that.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Jeff Schwartz.
I'm Jeff Schwartz, and I'm running against the great pretender. My opponent pretended in 2012 to support term limits, yet he's double-crossed the voters this year by claiming an exemption from his own term limits initiative. My opponent pretended in 2012 to oppose special interest money, yet he's double-crossed the voters by receiving more special interest money for his campaigns than any other politician in TO's history. My opponent claims to have broad support of the people when, in fact, he's supported largely by the top 1%, the wealthiest fat cats who profit off decisions he makes on council. My opponent is the kingpin of a political system that serves the wealthy special interests and not the average voter. My opponent shouldn't even be running this year, and I ask that he honorably withdraw from this race tonight and apologize to the voters for having deceived them for 12 years. I'm Jeff Schwartz. I'm the new blood with new ideas the council needs. I'm the man of the people. I meet the voters door-to-door. The voters tell me they've never seen my opponent at their door in 12 years. I say, "Let's end the domination of big money in politics." Star Wars says, "May the Schwartz be with you." And I say, "No more jokes on Thousand Oaks."
Thank you. Our next candidate is Kevin McNamee.
For the last four years, I've brought some 38 projects forward here in Thousand Oaks to improve the quality of life that all of you enjoy and I enjoy so much. I'd like to split up my platform and what I try to do for the city in the six areas. First is public safety. Brought LPRs not only to Thousand Oaks, but Ventura County that has reduced crime and put some of the bad guys in jail. Dealt with the Chilean burglary groups where we forced Mayorkas to put pressure on Chile to digitally upload their criminal database so that way all the other countries can access it to whether it lets someone into the country or not. Encouraging public school safeties as well as private school public safety lectures so that way we can keep our children safe. Assisted in bringing to attention to the district attorney and the sheriff massage therapy facilities that were fronting as sex trafficking. Second is quality of life. Brought forth a program to do leveling of the sidewalks that are uneven here in the city. Safe sidewalks program that has been very successful. In about four and a half, five years, we will have all the sidewalks leveled to help reduce trip and fall. Brought in tutoring learning centers to the new developments that are happening with apartments. Working with the low-income families at the free clinic that I volunteer my time. Turns out, they don't have a quiet environment, don't have access to tutors like the wealthy families. So, I thought this was a good solution, and the developers fought, thought the tutoring learning center would be actually a wonderful community benefit. More, but I will stop there.
Thank you. Brent Allen Hegel are next candidate.
Sure. So, in my professional career, I am a professional listener. I don't get paid unless I give the client exactly what they want. So, you know, I'm up here talking about my personal beliefs and what I will do for the city and my beliefs, but the role really isn't that at all. The role is to listen to the will of the people of District 5. So, it's not necessarily what I want or necessarily what I would even say is the best course of action. If the people of District 5 say this is the way to go, that's the way we go. The people rule. Having said that, I'd like to, it's the people that make the city run, and we need to source the best, even if we need to borrow them from existing companies where they currently work at. I'm a man full of ideas and possibilities that enrich the lives of all ages and demographics in the city. I would like to see strangers smiling at each other when passing by. Everyone seems so glum, so down, so busy to talk to each other in the city. We need to restore hope in our city, create a place that residents can be happy and thrive. More, more community interactions, more community galas, more community events, places where families can be together, a place full of the arts and celebration of the human spirit. Have pride in Thousand Oaks. People should be prideful to live in the city. It's a wonderful city. I'm from here, and I tell strangers all the time when I travel to New York some, "I'm from Thousand Oaks." I said, "I'm going to rep it. I love it." Everything starts as an idea, a seed of possibility, and I hope they become the massive oak trees of ideas that we can do here in the City of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Connie Ty Gutierrez.
I just want to start by saying thank you for everyone being here. As we, or as I have been on this journey, I've learned a lot about the district, and a lot of the district more than not don't actually participate in our elections. And I would encourage you all to leave here and tell a friend and ask your friends to tell a friend, and hopefully we can create some more voters this November, regardless of where they land, but just so that they become more civically engaged. If you've ever felt like City Hall wasn't working for you, then I'm your candidate. I will advocate for smart solutions that reflect your needs, not those of special interests. And I want to work collaboratively with our other council members to make a Thousand Oaks that works for everyone, our children, our seniors, and our business community. I'm running because I see the city's residents as my neighbors, the families I spend time out on the soccer fields with, and together we can create a stronger, more connected Thousand Oaks. We need a councilwoman, full stop. A councilwoman who lifts up everyone in the community instead of disparaging them. Lastly, I'll leave, I'll, lastly, I am the only District 5 candidate endorsed by the National Latino Peace Officers Association and Congresswoman Julia Brownlee. My name is Connie Gutierrez, and my friends call me Ty, and I hope to earn your vote this November. Please go to tyforTo.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last candidate is Al Adam.
Thank you. Yeah, it's interesting. You've reduced your campaign to a punchline from the Mel Brooks movie, Mr. Shorts. I will say the term limits were passed by 78% of the people. They don't take effect to 2026. You know that. Stop misleading the voters. I was in line at the DMV the other day, and there was a young woman behind me. She must have recognized me. She said, "Mayor, please bring things to the city for young people, things to do, places to live." That really made an impression on me because that's our challenge. We have to support our aging population, but we also have to make room for the next generation coming up. We've got to innovate or we're going to stagnate. There's three big things: jobs, places to live, things three big things: jobs, places to live, things to do. We are creating jobs. Our biotech sector is thriving. We've got 20 companies out there with six-figure jobs for young people. The average age is 25 to 35. It's fantastic. As you heard, we're creating affordable and workforce housing all across the city. And things to do, our mixed-use designation has really paid off. We have great gathering spots like Tarantula Hill, like Crawford's, new restaurants at Santao. Things are coming all the time for people to do and things to go and places to be and places to gather. So, you know, we have a great past here in the city. I want to honor our past, obviously, but we got a plan for the future, too. Don't need to sit and criticize the past. Let's hear a vision for the future. I think I have one, and that's what elections are about. They're about the future, and I'm very optimistic about the next 10 years in the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
And how about a round of applause for our candidate? I want to let you all know that this is the first of two forums. We are having a second forum that'll start about 8:15, and we have two of the candidates running for Caneo Valley Unified School District. They're both here, so please stick around if you can and join us for that. That one will only go for about a half hour. With that, thank you all, and we will be back soon.